From New Highland. And Tanya Seabrooks was Radcliffe City Council. She's done a lot for our schoolchildren. And also the 500,000 Americans who have passed away from this COVID-19. So we'll take a moment of silence for those folks. Okay, thank you. It's amazing that how many people. I read obituaries quite frequently in the paper and it's amazing how many people are associated or have taught or have worked in the Harden County School System. It's really gotten big and as years have gone on, us older folks have been getting around. It is a big organization, so we appreciate what those people have done for us and helped support the school system throughout the years. Don, do you want to do the board commitments for us?
I can do them. To improve our effectiveness, the Harden County Schools Board Team commits to keep children first, listen, be prepared, be professional, demonstrate financial stewardship, represent the entire district, and support district goals and support board decisions.
All right. And I want to thank all the people for being out here tonight. It's really great to see people coming back to board meetings. We feel like we've all been shied away from each other, or however you want to state it, but it's great to see all the principals and the people that is in our system. And Mr. Greg Sutton is going to take care of recognitions tonight. He's replacing John Wright, and hopefully you can do that.
Well, I did that last time and everyone messed up. They gave me a second chance.
We gave you a second chance.
That was code word for we didn't have anybody else to do it. That's what it was. Chairman Wise, we do have some HCS Stronger Together awards tonight, so if you'll make a motion so we can pass a resolution for those recognitions, I'd appreciate that.
All right. Need a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second to approve the recognitions for tonight. All in favor, second five saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries.
All right, our first recognition night, we have Ms. Kami Cunningham right here with us tonight. James Yalton Middle School, eighth grader, is a standout student with a glowing personality, a servant heart, and a brilliant mind. She asks for and collects donations for local charity each year to celebrate her birthday. This year she chose to help a local nurse who set up a virtual drive for the homeless. She collected tents, clothes, food, toiletries, et cetera. She has also orchestrated donation parties in lieu of birthday parties since kindergarten. These parties have benefited Spring Haven, local animal shelters, spring children's hospitals, worn blessings, and various food drives. One year she stocked the Family Resource Center at Ronnieville Elementary School with food and clothing for fellow students in need. Before the pandemic, she traveled with the Allegro Dance Theater to provide dance education to elementary and middle schools, providing exposure to the arts. Thank you, Kami, for everything you're doing.
Right.
All right, next up, HCS Child Nutrition Team members. Through the Lincoln Trail Chapter of the Kentucky School Nutrition Association, collected approximately $4,500 for the HCS Student Lunch Debt. Their understanding of how families can sometimes run into obstacles creating a debt situation has greeted students with warm smiles and healthy meals. We are truly grateful for their hard work in raising these funds and their dedication to our students and their health. Former Lincoln Trail Chapter President Nancy Richardson will be here accepting the award on behalf of the chapter tonight. I got to work with Nancy at Ronnieville Elementary School 2010.
Yes, very much.
That's right. Appreciate her work.
Thank you guys.
Ms. Richardson, did you want to introduce the folks who came with you as well?
Yes, there is a co-manager back here, Ms. Rhonda. She, I'm retired now, so I'm not in the chapter anymore because I'm retired. But Rhonda is our chapter president for this year. So, thank you. Come on, up here, he wants up here, picture.
One, two, three, don't go where three, three, good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cunningham's mom is here with her. She also teaches for us at Ronnieville Elementary School. So we appreciate you, Mom, for raising great kids.
I do want to point out they are West Virginia Mountaineer fans, though. That's what I want to make, want that noted in the minutes. Check out her room, it's decorated. Next on the list, we have the American Legion Auxiliary Harden Unit 113. Please come on up. Is a tremendous friend of Harden County Schools. They have provided food and clothing to our Family Resource and Youth Service Centers that they have worked for, hard to collect us these items. They have sponsored poster and essay contests that give students opportunities to earn money. They recently donated a book called Hero at Home by Sarah Barado to our Elementary School Media Centers. The book tells the story of a young lady whose father has suffered an injury while serving our country. Our young students now have another resource to help them learn about sacrifice, love of country, and understanding their fellow students who may have a parent who was injured in their service to America. Thank you.
One, two, three, three. Smile at me.
Thank you, Kami, appreciate you. Thank you, Nancy. That's all the recognitions we have for tonight. Chairman Wise?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I'm assuming we didn't have any visitors to sign in out there?
That's right. Well, something you are going to start hearing a lot about is financial literacy. And back in 2016, there was probably five states that actually required a financial literacy course as a standalone course requirement for graduation. Starting probably about 2018, Kentucky started looking at the legislation trying to require financial literacy as a course for graduation here in Kentucky. That has been passed. Since that time, we've done a lot of things to get financial literacy initiatives going across this district, and we want you to know about that. So one thing is that we have, we've had some community sponsors to help our schools get the Dave Ramsey program in their schools for teaching finance. We've got actually every fifth grade student completing a financial literacy course through an EverFi online program sponsored by Abound Credit Union. So I'm going to have actually, one of our principals, who was actually really, I think took the initiative last year, and has been one of our only schools to actually do it two years in a row from the inception of implementing that program with their school. And 55 out of 55 fifth grade students completed that in New Highland this year. So I'm going to have her come up and talk about the impact financial literacy is having in her schools. Come on down, Ms. Packer.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. If any opportunity, I can talk about New Highland, I'm all about it. Thank you for having me today. My name is Chalise Packer, and I have the privilege to be the principal at New Highland Elementary School, one of the best elementary schools in New Highland, in Party County. So financial literacy, what a great opportunity. When I think about it, I think about college and career readiness, because our students had the opportunity to have adult conversations with their parents about saving money. And so here recently, especially during COVID-19, there was a lot of conversations that they were having with their parents, because during NTI, we still were talking about financial literacy. We were still having conversations about saving money. And so they were talking about depositing money, they were talking about the stock market, they were talking about when they get in middle school and high school, how they can save money to help their families. So initially, we didn't know the direction that financial literacy would go into, but we see that even with our fifth graders, that they're so focused on their careers, they're so focused on college, and they're focused on when I get in high school, I need to get a job. So moving forward, what we talked about is having our fifth graders talk to our fourth graders about financial literacy, and bringing our sixth graders back to talk to our fifth graders about what it looks like beginning with the end in mind. And so financial literacy has been a win-win for me, for my school, but especially for our parents. Thank you, appreciate it. Does anybody have a question?
Well, I want to add a few things while she's standing here. Here's what her 55 students are getting. This is not just her 55 students. Last year, she was kind of what I would call a pilot school. Ms. Ruth Shannon, you know, really jumped in there, did the financial literacy program. This year Tammy Hall took it over, and this year all of her kids completed again. Here's what they get. This is from Abound Credit Union, one of our community partners. Everybody gets a financial, okay, financial education diploma. All 55 students receive this. They all get the Abound earbuds. And the most important thing is this is a $5 bill. Doesn't look like it, but they take this to Abound Credit Union, they take this $5, and they set up a savings account. Now, this is for all 1,000, 100 fifth grade students in our district have this opportunity. So basically, our community partner sponsors about, you know, look at 1,100 times five, $5,500 for our kids. And this is just a starting point, because when you look at where we're headed with this, we've already had not just our high schools moving to financial literacy, now our fifth grade has a program. I met with Bluegrass Middle School yesterday, their teacher, Mr. Queen, their careers course teacher, he's actually going to implement the Middle School Foundation's Personal Finance Course at the middle school level. He'll be our first middle school to do that next school year. And then you've got like Ms. Harden, Shmika Harden, working through Woodland Elementary School and other Family Resource Centers, are reaching out to families. They're having online virtual meets about personal finance, they're having meets about credit, managing daily expenses, interest rates, paying down debts, how to maximize your stimulus checks. They had six families show up the other night, and I thought that was powerful. So when you look at, you know, financial literacy, well, it's a graduation requirement. It is. But we've taken that, we started from the ground up with fifth grade, we're going to get to a middle school curriculum, working with our families, and then high school's just going to be the icing on the cake. So just wanted to share that with you all. Ms. Hall was supposed to be here tonight with some students. That was supposed to be last week. She had an obligation night, so she couldn't reschedule, so I apologize, you couldn't see what some of the kids were actually doing. But I just wanted to share that with you all. Any questions of us about where we're headed with that?
I do want to share, we were able to do a video with the Abound Credit Union to sort of advertise this financial literacy with our families, and we were able to go to Bluegrass Middle School, get two New Highland students who are over there this year to film that for us with the Abound Credit Union. Ms. Ryan with HCTV filmed our students, and it was amazing just to hear what they learned about the difference between wants and needs, not just that basic skill of wants and needs, but what happens if you spend too much money on your wants, and how they had to explain to their parents that if you spend too much on wants, then you don't have the finances to meet your needs. And the one young lady shared that they had a medical situation with her younger sister, and it was because of her insistence with her parents that they start saving money, that they were able to pay the medical bills for her younger sister. And she said, so I taught my mom and dad what it is to save money for what you need and not always for what you want. So I think it's important for those students to be able to take those lessons home for maybe some of the parents who didn't experience financial literacy when they went through school. So they did a phenomenal job, Ms. Packer.
Abound Credit Union has agreed to, since our seventh and eighth graders are currently at the middle school, obviously they didn't have this in their fifth grade, she's going to sponsor the $5 savings account options for every seventh and eighth grader who wants to finish a vault understanding money program through EverFi. They actually gave that to us for free as well to use to middle school level in their careers courses. Dave Ramsey Foundation's Personal Finance will be an actual curriculum. We're going to pile there, Bluegrass, on top of this vault understanding money online program. So I'm pretty excited about this. It's going to grow some legs, already has in the last year, so it's pretty proud of where we're headed. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now we're down to construction updates here. JRA was, and Tommy Gumm from Construction Company were with us at our noon meeting, and Lincoln Trail School is pretty much punched out, we think, on the punch list, and everybody is complimenting the school. We're proud of the appearance of it and the facility. And of course, East Harden is still trying to get out of the mud and freeze phase right now, I think, but they've got it mostly closed in, and they're making progress. Report wasn't the greatest we wanted to hear today, but we pretty much knew that the outside has got a ways to go. They've got to pour some concrete before we can do any paving, and so we're hoping that it'll be finished by the end of the school year, but who knows?
We'll see.
But anyway, it's still making progress, and Central Harden will probably, hopefully we might be able to approve bids at the April meeting. So they're waiting on KDE to return some documents and so forth to where we can proceed on, and it's all still moving along. John, you got anything you need to add, or?
Thank you, Governor Chairman.
Okay. And we're down to consent agendas, so. Been five weeks instead of four like normal, but everything is, I think we still had the same agenda we had for last week. Had a few change orders that I don't think there were enough credits to almost to offset the expenses, and they were at Lincoln Trail. And we're approving the commodity bid of child nutrition as recommended for the 21-22 school year. We're approving a science nature trail donation of gravel and earthwork for Creekside Elementary. And they're going to put a nature trail around the school down there. We don't know who all those donors are, but anything over 1,000 we have to approve, so I'd be glad to do that. Sounds like we've had some real generous donations come in, and that really helps the kids out. It sounded exciting today about the different things around the nature trail that they're going to have, so.
Well, we do have a list of some of the, in the enclosed document, Vulcan Materials, donated materials, Rocket Trucking donated trucking to get it there, and Copeland Brothers donated the skid steer work for the trail. So those are the ones we know.
Those are the ones we know, yeah. But we have a lot of anonymous in there also, and it's proud support of the community down there at Everwin. That all really helps things. And we have, we're approving the site-based decision, tentative allocations, fundraisers for the schools, the ones that they're doing. I'm assuming that's pretty much, anyone have anything they want to comment more on, or I appreciate being mentioned, those names there. And any other comments or anything you want to pull out or delete? Not, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
A second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, second five saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Motion carries. And we're down to action items. And recess, Harden County School District Finance Corporation Special Meeting.
Yes, so we have to go into recess and then reopen as the Finance Corporation with the call to order and then consideration of the East Harden Middle School Water Easement, and then we will adjourn that and reconvene into this session.
Okay.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yeah.
Move that we recess.
The board meeting.
All right. There a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to recess the board meeting and to call to order the Harden County School District Finance Corporation Special Meeting. All in favor, second five saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, I call it the Harden County School District Finance Meeting to order, and we're considering the approval of East Harden Middle School Glendale Site Water Easement. John, you want to elaborate on that just a little bit for us?
Happy to, Mr. Chairman. And just to clarify, you know, we still have students at what a lot of people call the Old East down in Glendale, and so that's actually the property that we're referring to. This doesn't have anything to do with the new construction. We were approached by Water District Two. They were, and many people are aware, down in that area, they've been putting a lot of infrastructure in for water mains, and they're wanting to cut across kind of underneath beside the football field in the back of the existing school to connect some lines. And if the board agrees to let that happen, they've agreed that in the future, should something be built over top of that line, are the need to be by the Harden County Board of Ed, they will move that line at their expense. So there's really very little downside for the board, and, you know, we'd be being good community partners by allowing that line to connect and reach other homes in the area.
So my question would be, you know, I see where it flows there, very familiar with that. It'll cut by the, beside the blockhouse, behind the press box, and go right across the road to the three houses that are there. But they want to not go to the top of that hill and run along the road? What happens if we sell the property? Does this restriction that their, does their commitment convey, or?
That's a great question that I didn't anticipate. I can certainly check into that.
Because if it doesn't, that would restrict who and how, and, you know, the value and all that.
That's certainly true. And again, you know, it's hard to have a crystal ball. We could be talking about 50, 100 years in the future, but.
That's why you run title opinions, because most of the time easements run with the property, you know, depending on how they're wording. But I can't imagine a water block company putting this line in without intending it to be a permanent easement.
Senator asking if their commitment to move it.
But it's a commitment to move it at their expense rather than the owner's expense that I'm concerned with.
You're concerned about the potential future value of our properties. Yeah.
Oh, you know what they're, yeah.
You're concerned about the future potential value
Yeah.
of us selling the property.
Yeah, only cuts off the.
Whether it affected or not.
Yeah, right, that's all. I mean, I really want to do everything we can to get water in Glendale. I live there, so. Sounds like a good thing to me, but, you know, I sure would hate to hurt the value of the property.
I'm sure I can reach out to Water District Two if it pleases the board and get an addendum to the easement paperwork that would stipulate that, you know, any future owner of said property, if that line would need to be moved in order to build a building, it would be at Water District Two's expense, if you'd like.
I would be more comfortable with it that way, or we can pass it with that provision.
That's exactly what I was going to say.
That's what I would do, just not pass it with the stipulation that.
Yeah, I'd be very comfortable with that.
And if for some reason they don't agree, we can take it back up.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
All right. Okay, so we should have a motion then to approve with consideration of John reaching an agreement that this will not affect the sale of our property, right?
Yeah. So moved. Somebody will have to write that out.
Okay, all right, well, so.
So your motion includes the amended language in there.
Yes.
Right. And if, like Don says, if something happens, it fails later with John before the signing of it, what?
We'll take it back up.
He'll bring it back to the board. All right, any other discussion? Not, have a motion?
I'll second the motion.
In a second, okay. All in favor, second five saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And now we will reconvene the.
We need to adjourn.
Yeah, we do, missed minute three. Man, I'm skipping lines. Okay, we need to adjourn. Did I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn the Harden County School District Finance Corporation Special Meeting. All in favor, second five saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. All right, now we reconvene our regular meeting. And new business?
No, sir.
Don't have no new business?
No, sir.
Sounds good. And the superintendent's report.
Yes, sir. I know we have, I anticipate from the number of phone calls that we've had today, that some folks were anticipating that our board would be voting this evening of whether or not we would return to five days a week of instruction. That is not a decision that is before the board this evening in Jefferson County. They are voting on that, I believe, this evening, but that is not the case here in Harden County. So I just want to update our families to know, we will be communicating with you. We had our parent advisory Monday night. We had our principals and administrators in last week. We had the opportunity to move, even with the snow and ice, to have them to come in. And this week, we've been meeting with our teachers, elementary, middle, and high school. There is still some language with even the governor's orders, and the governor's orders ask us to enhance or increase in-person instruction. What that will look like will depend on how we can meet the guidelines. So I want our families to know we are working toward increasing in-person instruction. We want to go about that safely. We have asked for teacher input. We will be working with our schools to, at the beginning of the year, our board saw each of the plans of our schools to return to in-person instruction. We will again have a document that our schools have to complete that talks about social distancing, taking temperatures, making sure our hallways are going one direction, that when our students are having lunch, that they are facing the same direction. So there are some additional things we need to work out. Our staff will be getting the second dose of the vaccine on March 4th and 5th and 8th and 9th. So when those dates happen, that increases our opportunities. But I didn't want people to be confused this evening to think that the board was voting on that and just decided not to. That was never going to be on the agenda, but we will be working with our schools and at the district, and we will be communicating this with our families throughout this process so that our families have time to plan for what this is going to look like. It's really important. I know we have a lot of families who have been incredibly flexible. Our staff in the school has been extremely committed and working incredibly hard and committed to doing this the right way. So I just wanted to update everyone that at this point, the board is not taking that. They didn't table it. It was not on the agenda for this evening, but we may have a special meeting before the next board meeting to consider and make sure we have everything in place accordingly. Just wanted to update our public on that, because I believe we will have multiple people watching it this evening with Jefferson County voting. I believe they anticipate that everybody would take that vote tonight, and that is just not the case at this point. Thank you.
We are on top of it, though. I would really like to see the kids get back in school, and, you know, we had our noon meeting today at John Harden, and Mr. Wells, he says, you know, it would really, and they're under numbers of capacity, it would really be tough to have the six-foot distance. He said if they go to three, things will work, so there's a lot of little factors out there. If we can just get some restrictions down, we're ready to go back to school. I'd love to see it, and hopefully that everyone who wanted their vaccination will get and do well with it. And hopefully everyone wanted their vaccination, they'll get and do well with it.
Yes.
All right, we need an executive session. And I, this is for a student hearing, right? So, the board calendar is March 18th at 11:30. Our regular board meeting, lunch meeting will be at Creekside and then of course, March 18th back here at Central Office. So, we're going to have a student hearing here tonight and if any of you all would feel you would like to stay, you're welcome to stay, but.
We're not going to conduct any business other than.
We won't have any business that we'll vote on after what we have had here tonight other than the student hearing, so we appreciate y'all coming out and we'll go into executive session. Have a safe drive home.
We need to go, a motion to go into the executive session.
I'll move that we go into executive session.
To consider.
Do we get to say the purpose? Purpose of.
Yes, please.
Yeah. Consider a student.
Conducting this on the theory.
Okay.
Second.